Good morning, and thank you for joining. I'm Arastelli Cruz, Calbright's Marketing Manager. Today, I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, July 20, 2020. Please follow along with our agenda on Board Doc. You can find the link on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. Please use the Q&amp;A feature to make public comment in Zoom to request to address the board for up to three minutes. If you're joined by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. You will be unmuted and called upon at the appropriate time. Public comments should be pertaining to today's agenda. If you have any other questions, please direct them to our Communications Director, Taylor Huckabee, by emailing taylor@calbright.org. A reminder, this board meeting is being recorded. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Board President, Tom Epstein.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Calbright Board of Governors. And we will begin with calling of the roll.
All righty. Hilda Guard Aguilaldo.
Here.
Darius Anderson.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Carrera. Amy Costa. Colm Fitzgerald. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Kim Perigo.
Here.
Bill Rollins.
Here.
Valerie Shaw. Alma Salazar.
Present, here.
Oh. Los Villalobos.
Here.
And I see Ms. Shaw. Thank you.
Okay. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Would trustee Anderson would like to lead us in the pledge today?
I have to turn my video back on.
Oh, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to start with just a little bit of info about the agenda. We are going to go into a short executive session after the closed session, I should say, after the President and CEO reports. And that will probably be about 15 to 20 minutes. Then we'll come back and do the bulk of the meeting. And then we're going to have another closed session at the end of the meeting, which will probably be longer, around an hour or so. And there won't be much business after that. Just an adjournment, actually. So with that in mind, let me just start with a few remarks. We're very grateful to the Governor and the Legislature for preserving funding for Calbright. I want to thank many individuals and groups that supported Calbright during the legislative process, including labor unions, businesses, and education and advocacy organizations. Despite major cuts to our budget, we do see a path to achieving our mission, but we will need to do more with less. We're determined to show significant progress in the next nine months to prove that the confidence and investment in us is justified. And we hope that our critics, those who are opposing some of the funding for us, will work with us so that we can address their concerns and be successful. I also wanted to just point out that in today's agenda, I think we're showing really great forward progress. We're stabilizing the long-term leadership of Calbright with the announcement of a permanent CEO. We're hiring eight full-time faculty and look forward to them and the classified staff organizing and getting collective bargaining, as we always promised. And finally, we're entering into a partnership with the second college that Calbright has developed a partnership with, in addition to Bakersfield. And it shows that we're working with the other colleges to add value and bring the work of Calbright to the entire. With that, I'll turn it over to President.
Thank you, President Epstein, and Vice President Haynes, and members of the Board of Trustees. I wanted to begin by echoing President Epstein's remark, thanking the Governor and key members of the Legislature and many of the strong individuals and advocates that we had throughout the state who really were a part of helping secure Calbright's first future through the legislative budget process. With July 1 behind us, the Calbright team really has a renewed sense of purpose and commitment to those hard-working Californians that have been sidelined by current economic conditions. The events of the past months, especially the past few weeks, have left a lasting impact and really a fire in the belly of those at the college. All of us feel a deep sense of gratitude and a deep sense of responsibility for holding space at the table to address the plaguing inequities that are facing the populations that we serve. For many of us, this comes from a place of life experiences; for others, a place of solidarity. But what it produces is a focus not just on conversations about equity, but action. The budget process may have left us with less, but we are focused on doing more and better. We're also focused on the ways that we do this together, as President Epstein mentioned, with longstanding supporters and partners, with our sister colleges and districts who share this commitment to working together and see the best of what we can accomplish together. And also with key industries and regions that are similarly solving for gaps that we're seeing in the current workforce infrastructure in our state. This meeting and the Action Agenda items before the board today represent the next stage of the college's journey. As President Epstein highlighted, the COVID crisis demonstrated the need for Calbright and what we do next, and actually how we do it, will determine whether this college, whether as a college where and as a part of the California Community College system, we can meet the challenges of ensuring that our state has an equitable economic recovery. The opportunity before us to work in new ways and is necessary to build the programming that's based not just on current jobs data, but in the anticipated ways in which we see industries and the skills needs changing. And this is what's needed, really, to prepare individuals, both in the short run for economic stability, but also in the long run for economic mobility. Part of this, as I think many of you have heard me say before, is about not creating these solutions in isolation. As envisioned by our legislation, we'll spend the next several months building out our connections to community and regional partners, building our employer engagement infrastructure for the good of Calbright students and for the good of the system as a whole. As we grow partnerships with other colleges, such as our initial partnership with Bakersfield College and our new potential partnership with Compton College, on the agenda today, we're going to continue testing out the ways that we can meet our working and economically displaced Californians where they are and to solve for their educational and training needs across the span of their careers, from the perspective, really, of their goals and objectives, not ones that we impose upon them. In the coming months, we'll plan to work with more districts and colleges interested in collaborating on efforts to do what is difficult to solve individually and for the benefit of the cross-section of Californians who need that collective capacity to get the education they need for reemployment, but more importantly, beyond that. A key part of our next stage is the culmination of a many-month process with support from the statewide academic senate to hire the college's first full-time faculty. And I just have to say, what an amazing team it is. I really could not be more thrilled. The faculty candidates the board has before them today represent a diverse and talented group of instructors and counselors, many of whom have deep subject matter expertise, experience with community colleges, and online experience. They are really shining examples of faculty leaders who hold a very asset-based view of the students that Calbright serves and who have also demonstrated track record of putting students first. I'm very excited to support them as they join the Calbright team to strengthen our instructional, student support, and campus-wide governance efforts. Since we last met, we've been hard at work at making critical changes to the college's operations and improvements to our instructional and support efforts, preceding a new summer enrollment effort that's going to test our marketing and outreach strategies and actually prepare us for a deeper program and support redesign launching this fall. I just want to say, things never go perfectly, but I really believe that the test of Calbright's resolve and the team involved is also measured in the commitment that we have to continually move forward, to really find what doesn't work and to make it better. This is the mark of where I think we all need to be at this moment, focused on rapid iteration, demonstrating challenges we're facing, and demonstrating the improvements that we're making. This is really what's needed when we're confronting such complexity and shifting needs in our communities, that for those students that are inside our institutions, but more importantly, for those who we are seeking to support into our institutions. I wanted to highlight one such insight from our current efforts in our continued analysis of our beta cohort of learners. And just to note, we will be sharing more about our beta cohort learnings in the coming weeks. Part of our analysis found that beta students who started orientation at the college after selecting an educational goal that was highly aligned with Calbright's offerings and mission were three times as likely to complete Essentials, which is the first course in a two-course program pathway that is designed for the beta cohort. Highly aligned meant that their intention to earn a technical certificate without transfer, prepare for a new career and acquire job skills, or advance in a current job or career to update their job skills. In our efforts to help students better connect to educational opportunity that fits their needs and objectives, this information helps us now identify Calbright students, but also steer students with aligned offerings at other community colleges. I wanted to raise this example, actually, because I've been thinking a lot more about what it means to lead this college at this moment, in the moment that we're in as a state, in the moment that we're in as a country. And I reflect a lot on the racial injustice that we're seeing. And I think many of us have seen it to be insidious in employment, in education, and nearly every aspect of civic life. And then with the inflection point of the death of George Floyd, it has really shown us that it's actually ubiquitous. And really, that's what's triggering this moment of collective empathy that's leading to action. This really strikes at the core of how Calbright is striving to serve, where we see the gaps in educational opportunity persist. A hero of mine, and I'm sure of many of yours, Representative John Lewis, actually passed away on Friday. And like many, I have been inspired by his life's work since the early days of his work with the student organizing that he did with the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee in desegregation work in the South. And what I want to take with me and what I carry with me when I think about his life is really the relentless drive he had towards action. It was a reminder to me that it's not enough for us to just continue to pervasively use the word equity in our goals and our mission and vision statements. Absolutely, that's important. But really, it's to get at targeting what in our systems and our policies and processes need to be reexamined and re-engineered to facilitate those equitable outcomes. And when we encounter the challenging aspects of the systems that are set up for conventional students, but that erect barriers to success for today's college students, those learners who are working, who are struggling right now to stabilize their incomes, who are juggling childcare, eldercare, or a myriad of other obstacles, Calbright's role is going to also have to be to provide that social justice lens that names and confronts those policies and practices and conventions that run counter to student success. Lastly, I just wanted to let the board know how truly humbled and honored I am by the prospect of leading the next phase of the college to really position Calbright to do what we need for underserved communities. But more than anything, I really feel a deep sense of responsibility to always be pushing through, towards focusing on how our work and the work of higher education more broadly needs to change and to evolve to better serve communities of color and low-wage workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we will convene into closed session. And we'll be back hopefully in about 15 or 20 minutes. Hey, Tom. You're mute. Thank you. It looks like we have a forum again. And so we will reconvene from closed session. And we will announce the action that was taken in closed session in item 4.1 after we do the consent agenda. So with that, we have, on the consent agenda, we have four items. And the is, I don't think we need anybody to present that. We just, does any member of the board have any concerns or anything off the consent agenda?
I don't have a concern, Tom, but I did want to just ask Ajita and the team that it appears that we're adding some new positions, which I don't have any problem with. But at some point, it would be nice to have a revised organizational charts that we can kind of see what the structure looks like. And that can be at a future date.
Yes, we'll be bringing that forward in August.
Bringing that, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Yeah, we'll be bringing that forward in August.
In August, okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Just on that, when you say August, you mean for a meeting? Or it's going to be presented, then we'll talk about it in September?
Right, August is the executive committee meeting. So we can first present it there, and then we can share it in September as well.
Okay. Any other board comments? Any public comments?
No, I don't have any public comment at this time.
Give people a few seconds here to see if anybody wants to weigh in. Okay, then we'll need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'm moved to approve.
All second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Sorry about that. Hilda Guard Aguilaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Felicia Escobar Carrera. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rollins.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar. Alma Salazar.
Aye. Hi, sorry about that.
Los Villalobos.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries, we'll go on to the Action Agenda. Item 4.1, the President/CEO Employment Agreement. This is what came out of the closed session. And I'm going to read the agreement that the board has reached. And then we will have a public vote on it. And so first, after conducting a thorough search and interview process for a new President and CEO, the Board of Trustees of Calbright is pleased to offer the position to Ajita Tall Walker Menon. We considered an interview with a strong group of candidates from throughout the country, and Ms. Menon emerged as the unanimous choice of the board. She has done an outstanding job as interim CEO since February, and we expect that progress to accelerate under her continued leadership. Pursuant to California laws, Board President, I am obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of the agreement and the values of the same. Following my announcement of the monetary provisions of this employment agreement and the associated values, the board will vote on the agreement. The agreement is for a three-year term and provides for an annual base salary of $285,000 each year, which is unchanged from Ms. Tall Walker's current interim President/CEO compensation. The agreement provides for a yearly salary adjustment beginning on August 1, 2021, in the amount equal to the actual funded cost of living adjustment for the California Community Colleges. The agreement also provides for an annual bonus of a maximum amount of $10,000 should Ms. Tall Walker Menon obtain a satisfactory performance evaluation and meet performance goals and objectives. The agreement provides for membership in CalPERS and related employer contribution as set in statute, and health benefits as currently offered to current administrative employees. So with that, we will look for a motion. Or is it, if there's any board comment? If not, we have a, we need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, that's, I think, Anderson and, and was that Aguilalde? Who did the second? I think that was it. Are there any public comments on this item?
I don't see any public comment, Tom.
Okay, well then, let's call the roll.
Hilda Guard Aguilaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Yes.
Bill Rollins.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw. Ms. Shaw.
Yes. You hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. I thank you.
Okay. All right.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Bill Villas- Villalobos.
Aye.
And I see that Ms. Correlo, Felicia Correlo.
Funny, I bet I have a crying baby behind me.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Ajita. We're thrilled to have you permanently onboard and look forward to great progress in the term of your contract. So thanks for stepping up and doing this great work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 4.2, Faculty Positions and Appointments.
Yeah, good morning, President Tall Walker Menon, Board President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, and board members. My name's Nick Schweitzer, I'm the Chief Financial Administrative Officer of the college. Today, we're requesting approval of eight faculty positions and appointments. The college, of course, needs to establish faculty positions, including instructors and counselors. We've undertaken a process to recruit and select these individuals. And so we've got for you today, as I said, eight faculty members. One for each of our programs, the medical coding, computer IT support, cybersecurity, two work experience instructors, and then three counselors. All the positions are full-time with a 225-day work year. And we have Pam Sanborn with us. It was our chief, Acting Chief Learning Officer that can provide a little more details on the selection process and the candidates. So Pam.
Good morning. So we worked in collaboration with our statewide academic senate representatives every step of the way. We first began by creating a Policies and Procedures Handbook for Hiring Faculty. Our statewide academic senate reps provided feedback and then gave approval. approval for us to move forward utilizing these procedures. The next step was for us to create job postings. Again, our ASCCC reps provided feedback and approval. We had a large, when we had a large enough pool of candidates, reformed our screening committees, which included faculty from other community colleges that were appointed by our ASCCC reps. Each screening committee created their own scoring rubric and interview questions. Members of the committees scored the resumes individually and then mutually agreed upon the candidates that would be interviewed. Interviews were conducted. Again, screening committee members individually scored each person interviewed, and then mutually agreed upon the candidates that would move forward for second interviews. Second interviews were conducted by the president and acted CLO or CSO, and today, we put forward our recommendations for full-time faculty hires.
Thank you. So the floor is open for board comments.
I have a comment, Tom. I just wanted to let the, the team at Calbright know that I really appreciated that they put a process in place, that they worked with the statewide academic senate, and it was good to get a report from them, that they felt very comfortable with the process. So thank you for, for being mindful of all that. And I'm very excited, I'm very excited to see faculty hiring. I think that's going to help a lot in getting your programs launched and making sure that what you've learned from your beta cohort gets incorporated into the next moves for your curriculum. And I did have a, a conversation with Ajita that, you know, a faculty member for each area is a great start, but there's going to be a lot put on their plate. And so I really just want to remind the, the team that, you know, they're going to be responsible for all the curriculum for educational development, for governance structures, for professional development, and all of these areas that generally, we have an army of people to do. So just to be mindful to stay on the track of keeping faculty at the forefront of your mind to make sure that you have a healthy institution, but very happy where you are and, and very happy with the process. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Other board comments?
Tom, I had a question, which is, hey, I concur with everything that my colleague just said, that this is really exciting, I think, for us to actually have faculty members who will be absolutely essential to the future of Calbright. I know, or later in the agenda, we are looking at kind of salary survey information and how to recalibrate salaries for employees of Calbright. And I'm curious, since that work is just now beginning, how was it determined, kind of the salary and benefit levels of the faculty that are before us today?
So I can, I can start and answer that, and Pam can, can fill in anything. So, you know, of course, we do not have a salary schedule in place yet, so what we asked our consultants to do was to do a, a soft study, provide us some data, some comparables that we could use. We took that information, and we looked at each of the resumes of the candidates, the, the qualifications they come in with, the teaching experience, the work experience they came in with, and we made a, a judgment based on, on that experience. So, you know, in a typical community college setting, you know, when someone gets hired, they'd be placed on a salary schedule on, you know, a step and column based on, you know, their, their, you know, the numbers of years of experience they have and their, their, their academic credentials. So we did, I guess, a ad hoc version of that, using the data that McKnight provided us, and that's where we came up with their, their salary, salary levels. Now, the benefits, you know, are the, the same as what the, the board adopted for all Calbright employees. They would participate in those, those same benefit programs at the, with the same, with the same employer contribution levels.
So, this is Pam, I have a follow-up to that, and just for clarification, I'm assuming that it was taken into account that these are not 10-month faculty, that they are indeed 12-month faculty? That should be part of that, right?
Yes, absolutely. Thank, thank you for that. I, I left that off, and that's, that's pretty critical to this. So of course, most community college faculty are 10-month positions. There are about 170-day to 1, 170 to 180-day workload. Our, our work year is 225 days for these faculty. So in our analysis, and, and McKnight provided us data that was adjusted to reflect that longer work year for, for faculty. So our, our salaries do reflect that.
Thank you.
Tom, I have a quick question as well.
Sure.
Great. And I, my understanding is that you guys work very closely with the academic senate on this, this process, so I just wanted to thank you for doing that. I also know that the academic senate are industry leaders in making sure that we promote faculty diversity. So I just want to know from a high level, how are you incorporating faculty diversity into your initial hiring practices? Because I think the, the very first ones that you get started with will establish a, a pattern for how you conduct the rest of the process.
So maybe Pam, could, could you speak to that?
Absolutely. So yes, diversity is very important for us and for our students as well. And so we made sure that we all went through training, first of all, through EEO training, and so we, all the members of the committee started with that. We want a really robust, diverse faculty that represents our diverse campus that we have at Calbright as well, and will continue to do professional development and be a part of academic senate's efforts in the state to ensure that we continue this.
And maybe to help out, could you describe the, the diversity breakdown of the, of these initial eight hires?
Nick, would you, would you like to take that?
Yeah, I, so, yeah, I don't, I don't know this, you know, the specific diversity breakdown. You know, I wasn't part of the interviewing process, but maybe if the...
Ajita?
Yeah, I'm happy to address it, actually. So we have two Asian individuals, two African-American individuals, Latino individual, and through two, sorry, yes, two Caucasian.
How many women?
Five women and three men.
What about the hierarchy?
Say more about that.
Pardon me?
Say, the hierarchy.
In terms of, in terms of, who's, who has the higher position? Ethic, when you look at, you know, you look at it ethnically, you might have, who, who has the higher position?
So these are equally situated faculty professionals in our institution. And because we don't, yes, and, and they represent different areas of work. So five on the instructional side, three on the counseling side. On the instructional side, they're either related to subject matter area, or the workforce skills piece, that's a central part of our program development.
What, what are the current, current overall numbers now?
That I would have to get back to you on, for, for our contract faculty. I'm happy to provide.
For the entire organization?
Oh, yes, I can provide that update for us. I don't have that right now, but I'm happy to follow up with the board.
Thank you.
I'll mention one thing, too, as a, as a matter of learning from this process and going forward, which is, I think we also aim to be conscious, Representative Eltonado, particularly because we want to think about who we're recruiting into the college and what opportunities they may have had thus far in their career in terms of the pipeline into permanent faculty positions. And so I think the consideration that we've given to both work experience and teaching experience, and the fact that as we're moving towards an integrated learning and supports model, many of these faculty have had experience both on the instructional side and on the student support services side. So I think we want to continuously be examining the pool that we have relative to the criteria that we set for screening candidates, and one of those areas that can be equalizing is having a more holistic view of the types of experience people have with the lens of how it is relevant to the role that they're seeking at the college.
That's exactly what I was looking into. Thank you very much for that, Ajita.
Okay, any other board comments? Okay, what about public comment?
I do have a public comment from Virginia May. Virginia, you're unmuted, and I'll start your time when you're ready. Virginia, did you mean to request to speak on this item?
If you're trying to speak, you're unmuted.
It looks like it might have been an accidental request. You dropped off the call, so you can proceed, President Epstein.
Okay. No other public comments, then. Okay, well, let's, well, ready to take a motion and on the approval of these, of these eight faculty positions?
I would like to move approval enthusiastically for the inclusion of full-time faculty, and thank Pam and Ajita for making this process so seamless for us.
Tom, this is Kim.
Okay, Kim is second. Great, thank you both. Please call the roll.
Hildegarde Aguilaldo?
I echo Jelena's enthusiastic "aye".
Darius Anderson? Mr. Anderson? Felicia Carrera?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Jelena Grande?
I would like to say "aye" times eight for each of the faculty positions.
Thank you.
I guess I echo Jelena's "aye".
Okay. Kim Perigo?
Yes.
Bill Rollins?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Enthusiastic "aye".
And Gloss Villalobos?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Tom, before we move on from the item, I, I did want to give a special thanks to, to Mia on the Calbright team, who, none of this would have been possible without, we have been at an HR deficit that has thankfully been corrected in this meeting with the hiring of a new HR director, but she has really carried a, a large part of the workload on this. And so I just wanted, you know, from all of us, extend our appreciation for, for her work, which is often unsung.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, another sign of progress in today's meeting. We've got two out of our three done, the, the new CEO and the new faculty, and now we're on to the third, our partnership with Compton College.
Hey, Tom, if I could interrupt real quick, it looks like Virginia May did want to comment on this item.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. May.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so this has been hard to get through here. So greetings, interim president Mennen, but I guess congratulations, because now you are president Mennen, Board President Epstein, and trustees of the board. My name is Jenny May. I'm Vice President of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. Dolores Davison, now President of the ASCC, has appointed me to serve as the liaison from the ASCC to the Calbright Board of Trustees. This is an exciting role for me, as ASCC continues to improve support and assistance to Calbright this next year in regard to academic and professional matters. I'd like to commend the work of the Calbright staff, Dolores, and the ASCC-appointed faculty in the fast and heavy lift to bring the qualified faculty through well-established processes as required by Title V on the agenda for board approval today, which you all just approved. So congratulations, this is very exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny.
And we look forward to working with you on many more. So with that, we'll now move on to the Compton agreement.
Yes, thank you. We're requesting approval of a two-year partnership agreement with Compton Community College District for $150,000. The purpose is to develop new strategies for both, both institutions and for the California Community Colleges as a whole for increased educational opportunities, skill-based training and career advancement, primarily achieved through existing and future expansion of online competency-based education, stackable credentials, certificates, and, and other degrees. We'll also support space renovation and staffing at Compton College, among other things. And I have with me Tamika Connor, our Vice President for Learner Services, who can provide some more background and details on the agreement.
Good morning, trustees. This is exciting. Compton College is a partnership where we have a co-located site, and this will help support adult education students in the Compton College region that are transitioning to higher education. It will also provide Calbright College Director of Outreach an opportunity to do some outreach, and with members of the community who are not currently engaged with the California Community College, he will also be able to offer open house opportunities and onboarding support for Calbright students. We envision this MOU as being able to provide not only opportunities for Calbright alum to continue their educational opportunities, but also for alums to move through Compton College programs that have been aligned with Calbright College, and to possibly continue on to Cal State University with Cal State Dominguez Hills as well. We also see this as, as an opportunity for continuing Calbright students to receive any type of support on, onsite for technical issues as well as academic support. This is also an opportunity for us to have a teaching and learning site for faculty who want to learn about competency-based education, and who also want to increase opportunities for program pathways between Calbright and Compton College. In long-term, our goal is to also extend our contract with opportunity at work to bring the marketplace to Compton College students as well to increase employer engagement. We will have progress reports every 90 days from Compton College, and we also have meetings set up within this contract for continuous conversations between Compton College faculty and staff, and Calbright's faculty and staff on program pathways. Any questions?
Anyone, is anyone from Compton speaking?
No.
No, okay. Number Costa?
I have two questions, which, thank you for the presentation, but one, it would help me if you could kind of give me an example, like an anecdote of like, the type of student that this agreement is seeking to help with kind of where you see that pathway going. And secondarily, as part of the contract you're asking us to approve, there is a transfer of $150,000 for a partial facility improvement. So I'm wondering what the total facility improvement budget is. Thank you.
Sure. We're seeking two type, well, we're seeking several type of students. One, we're seeking an opportunity to recruit students who are not currently engaged in the California Community College for Calbright. So our Director of Outreach is located very close to Compton College, and so this will be an opportunity to offer some open house and informational sessions, particularly for Compton College adult ed students who are transitioning to that next level educational opportunity. adult ed students who are transitioning to that next level educational opportunity. In addition to that, this is also an opportunity for Calbright students who are currently enrolled at Calbright to receive some additional support, be it onboarding support or technical support as well. In addition to the repurposed site, there are two classrooms that will be repurposed for a hub, a distance education hub. And, and so we have additional agreement set up for Compton College to determine what type of renovations need to be done in order to make those rooms usable for computer technology as well as space for a teaching and learning center. Does that address your question?
What's the total facility budget?
So the total facility budget is right now $90,000.
I'm sorry, I'm not checking that. If it's $90,000, why are we giving them $150?
Oh, because we also, we are also.
I'm assuming they're contributing some and we're contributing some.
We're also supporting the staffing of the center. We're supporting a 30% salary of a distance education manager to staff the center for two years.
Any other board questions, comments?
Hi, Tom. It's Felicia. I had a question. Was just wondering how, if you could share a little background about how this partnership came together? I mean, I think we're gonna, I'm hoping that you all will be able to partner with other community colleges in the future. And it would just be helpful to get a better sense of how the partnership.
Sure. With this partnership started off really by having a robust conversation with our, the Compton College president and his team of administrators, a few of which work with adult ed, workforce development, and some of the academic disciplines. And from there, we did a brainstorming opportunity with our president as well to determine what are some issues that we can solve, common issues that we can solve for students? And then how can we expand opportunities, educational opportunities for Calbright alum? In addition to that, we are hoping that we can continue to expand competency-based educational opportunities as well. So this co-located site was also important because this is a community that has been really impacted by COVID-19 in terms of unemployment. And this is an opportunity for us to test out some of our models, particularly with employer engagement as well. And this is how this conversation came about. And, and the co-located site really was a need as well for our adult ed transition specialists to ensure that they had a space in place to discuss next steps for transitional steps and program pathways for graduates of their GED program, their ESL programs, and some of their Tier One CTE programs as well.
Okay, member Grande.
Thank you. I was wondering, was there an RFP published? So other community colleges that may have been interested in a partnership such as this would have been able to participate and in, indicate their interest in partnering as well?
There was not an RFP for this process. This is definitely being treated as a prototype process. I think what we learned from this, we hope to be able to expand for additional opportunities with community colleges. And in particular, we're having a lot of conversations with district leaders and regional consortia and would anticipate an RFP process, more like probably an RFI process down the road. What we learned through the conversations with Compton College was also kind of where some of the gaps were in, in particular districts and in particular communities. And it gives us a good way to structure some of the questions that we would have when we think about partnering in other parts of the state, in other region and local areas of the state in ways that are starting to emerge as some key areas where we want to provide some support and seamlessness between Calbright programs and existing programs. So I definitely see something like that on the road. And I think this will help us shape the contours of what that kind of a place-based strategy could look like.
Thank you. Just one other question regarding the relationship that we will have in order to path our students from the STRUT learning management system to the Canvas learning management system. There's a portion of the contract that indicates that there's going to be some sort of a feasibility determination between Compton and Calbright. And yet I see when we look at one of the presentations that's going to come a little bit further down, which is the, the budget update, that there is a legislative charge that we actually adopt the system-wide learning management system. So is it, is it appropriate to say that we should look at the feasibility of, of pathing STRUT to Canvas? Or that there will be a way for us to path and Compton's going to help us get there?
We have not yet. So we have not yet tested the conditions under which we move something from STRUT into Canvas. We do know that the technical capability does exist. So, you know, we will be able to meet our statutory mandate, which is not necessarily the adoption of Canvas. It is a way of any LMS talking to Canvas. And so being able to port our programmatic content into Canvas is, is what we're trying to, trying to figure out exactly how to do. So there's a lot of implementation things around that that we're in the process of figuring out. And I, I am hopeful that the work with Compton College and also conversations that we're having with OEI will help provide some seamlessness there sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much.
Member Salazar.
Tom, just a quick.
Ajita, I'm excited that you're working with Opportunity at Work to assist with the employer engagement. There are a lot of organizations and partners who also work very closely with employers. And I would hope that we take advantage of those opportunities. And I'm happy to be a resource for you.
Yes, I appreciate that. That is definitely on our radar. And I think it'll start to emerge, especially as we get deeper into conversations with some of the regions, because there's features of workforce system that are robust and exciting in different ways. And what we want to figure out is what is, how can we add value to that process? How can we address some of the gaps that folks who've been doing this work for some time are also seeing? So very much on our radar and definitely see that downstream as being incorporated in the, in the process, especially of strategic planning and building out a strategy for how we engage with different regions and districts and colleges.
Perfect. Thank you.
Member Aguilanelda.
Thank you very much. Just a quick comment. It seems like it was just at the last board meeting when Byron August from Opportunity where it came to make that very impressive presentation before our Board of Trustees. So considering that you guys were able to not only collaborate as thought leaders in the area of bridging gaps, but also put into place a plan and a course of action that we can take that could potentially set the stage for additional steps, I think speaks a lot to you guys about how fast you're going and the quality of the work you're doing. So thank you so much for not only collaborating, but making this happen so quickly. This is really impressive.
Thank you all.
I want.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I wanted to say something about Compton College, that there are some exciting things going on there. But most importantly, it really, the students are the ones that are most challenged probably throughout the system. And it's just a good place for us to be.
Great.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
So this is Pam. So I really appreciate that Calbright is beginning to have these conversations with our sister colleges. And I think that the most helpful part of this is not looking at, at the, the, looking, let me put it in a positive way, looking at each college for what it believes it may need and to make, and to make assessments about that. To, to think that each one of our colleges are the same. And I know we don't do that, but sometimes we want to create a solution for a much broader set of colleges. And so there's, as was mentioned, there's a regional nature to where these colleges are cited. There's a, a, a regional reality to those colleges that have and some of those colleges that have not. And that impacts the students that are being served at that college. And so I, I would encourage Calbright and our, our, our president, CEO, to just make certain that we are listening to what is actually happening within that college in the setting that it's in and, and work with them on helping them navigate what might be helpful in this next step for them. And so the, and we learn from that as a college. And they are, and, and they, they have an asset in, in moving the ball for students where they are. So thank you very much.
Okay, any other board comments? Any comments? Okay, go ahead, Bill.
I just wanted to congratulate the team over at Calbright for this. You know, President Epstein and I were able to go and visit Compton together. And I would say Dr. Curry is one who is not afraid of trying something new and taking on new challenges. I think he'll be probably the best partner I, I could think of for us in this endeavor, because he understands the needs in his community. He's very well-connected there. And this is capacity building, both for us and for them in an area and at a college, at a site that can really use it. And I know that there are also space impacted. So I'm glad we are able to get a couple of rooms. But this really seems like it's one of the best test cases I could think of. So congratulations on that.
Great. Any other board members? Okay, any, are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, then let's, we need a motion to approve the agreement.
Haynes, move approval.
I'll second.
Haynes and Perry. Okay, please call the roll.
Hildegarde, Aguilanelda.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Mr. Anderson. Felicia Carrero.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perrigo.
Aye.
Bill Rollins.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Blossilla Lobos.
Aye. It's Darius. I was on mute. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Moving on to the tentative 2021 budget.
Yes, thank you. We're requesting approval of the tentative budget for 202021. We have until September to adopt a tentative budget. As I've mentioned in previous presentations, the tentative budget is not the final budget. We have a couple of more months to work on the budget and before we need to adopt a final budget. So with that context, if we could go to the slide deck, yeah, thank you. We could go to the next slide. Yeah, great. Thank you. Yeah, so the, these are the, the objectives that have informed our, our budget development. You know, first is stepping up our efforts to serve more students. Of course, the, the hiring of faculty and the partnerships is a certainly a key start to that. And there'll be, you'll see more, more similar things in the, in the budget. You know, we have had some, some reductions from the state to our funding. So we've got to, you know, look at how we can do, you know, more with less and, and become a learner organization and more flexible in our approach. And then we want to ready ourselves for scale to, to build additional capacity and to grow, grow the college. So if I could go to the, the, actually, I'm gonna probably skip through the, the next couple of slides, because you're all well aware of our, our future statutory deadlines and the statutory goals for the college. So if we could skip to the slide on annual funding and we can get into the details. Yeah, that's like, great, thank you. So our, our current staffing level is approximately 55 FTE. And that, that includes the, the faculty and other positions that you just approved. We, you know, we've assumed in our budget that we're going to have room for another approximately eight full-time equivalent staff to add this year. Of course, that is, you know, quite a bit lower than, than what we had presented last month. Well, not quite a bit, or about half of what, what we had estimated last month. And that's primarily due to the reduction in our funding. You know, we're still working on our org chart and how those, those FTE will be added to and what roles and capacities those FTE will be added. And of course, that, that number could change a little bit, you know, depending on, you know, the cost of those positions and, and other decisions that we may make as we work on our, on our final budget. Some other things to, to keep in mind, you know, we've gone on to our own payroll and implemented our own benefits. And we're paying into the schools fund for STIRS and PERS. Actually, today was the, our first payroll. Should be hopefully hitting all of our employees' accounts today. But part of that is that our benefit costs have increased pretty significantly because of the change in the, mostly STIRS and PERS. These, the cost for, for, for schools, the school employer contributions are much higher than, than what we are paying when we were operating under the Foundation for California Community Colleges. Some other areas where we've added, added additional monies and really reflecting the additional staff we plan to add, but even more so significant increase in students that, that we are anticipating, certainly in, in supplies. And that's mainly instructional supplies. There'll be a significant increases in, in, in costs. We've really cut down quite a bit on the experiential consultants that we're projecting for next year. We've got a million budgeted. We expect to use the, the one-time funding much more for the consultants than, than we have in the past. And then other operational expenses are, are also projected to increase. Certainly, travel and professional development is going to be significant as we add on these, these faculty and, and, you know, we learn how to, you know, operate competency-based programs. Then, you know, software licenses for additional students and staff. We're, you know, just really kicking off our new financial and student information system. We still have plans of, although we're, we're out of our, our office space in, in Oakland, we will be at the end of this month out of the office space in LA. We do anticipate that we will at least get some temporary leases going again later in the fiscal year. So we've got money budgeted for that. And then of course, you know, we'll, we'll have some additional audit and legal mandates and insurance costs as, as we, as we're continuing to expand our operations. If you can go to the slide on one-time funding. Next slide. All right, so this are, are what, our one-time funding, how we plan to allocate our one-time funding. There are some minor adjustments here to what was presented last month. Certainly the five million for the, the workforce exchange partnership. We still have that side. We're still working on developing that. Seven million to improve Calbright's existing programs. $7 million to improve Calbright's existing programs, develop new pathways, student support. So we've increased that funding a bit and that reflects the, you know, wanting to use our one-time funds more for those consultants that we have that are assisting us with creating our new programs and improving our existing ones. And then $5 million for the further developed online competency-based education. Certainly, the Compton partnership would be part of this expense and we look to expand those partnerships. $10 million in partnerships for place-based agencies. That's the same, I believe, the same as what we had presented last month. The outreach, $5 million for outreach, that's the same as last month as well. And then the $5 million for the Enterprise Resource Planning System. I believe that we've increased that a little bit. We believe, as to what was presented last month, I think it was $4 million last month, we've increased that a little bit as we, you know, reassessed how much we might be spending on the improving our technologies. And so we think we might, we might be spending more. And the $7.9 million on cap outlay, again, as I mentioned, we'll probably be looking to at least occupy temporary facilities. And we'd hope to identify a permanent, start identifying permanent facilities towards the end of the fiscal year. And so we've set aside some money to do any build-out for those facilities. So I could go to the next slide. So we could see how this looks. Oops. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so this is, this is how the numbers work out for us. You know, as you can see, the $15 million in ongoing funding, we, you know, we had, you know, $20 million that we reduced in May to $17 million and we've ended up with $15 million. So that's, that's a, you know, fairly significant reduction. And that's, that's why we're seeing or anticipating a reduction in the number of staff that we're able to add next year. You can see we're, based on our ongoing expenses, we do have a little bit of room in ongoing expenses versus our revenues. But we are, we are making sure that we're pretty tight there. One-time expenditures, you can see the expenditures that I just outlined. It's $45 million in expenditures. So that's a significant part of the amount of one-time money we have remaining. You know, we started with $100 million and the legislature reduced that. Well, actually, we had over $100 million. The legislature reduced that to $80 million. So we're budgeting, you know, a little over half of that for next year. And then, and then the last column is, are the totals. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that board members have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Hi. Yes, this is for Nick and Jita. I'm looking at the funding set aside for some of these partnerships, particularly with the AJCCs. And I really hope that as we work particularly with state agencies, there is a commitment for co-investment from them as well. And I really hope that Calbright's not the only entity footing the bill for some of these partnerships. I think there are resources that can be leveraged and I really hope that, particularly with the AJCCs, that they're leveraging their we-o-a dollars to bring these partnerships to fruition.
Thank you, Alma. Yes, that is absolutely what we envisioned. And again, in this scenario, we want to think about how we're positioned to address some of the gaps that we've identified or have been identified to us, especially through the last recessionary period and where folks essentially got stuck in the transformation of AJCCs. And so part of this is how we, our piece of it relative to the overall investments that are happening and that will continue to come from a federal stream of resources, hopefully new resources in the fall.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
I have a question too.
Me three.
Sure.
Tom, you're on you.
Sorry about that. Was that member Grande first?
I would defer to Darius because I think he was before me.
Okay.
Jita, thanks. Just looking at this tentative budget, understanding sort of what happened in the last negotiation with the legislature. Obviously, their big concern is results, results. How many students do we have on board? Is there incremental dollars here that we've looked at that we're going to be shifting to try to expedite or speed up the onboarding process?
Yes, we're actually all over that right now internally. And the part of the one-time funds also that's allocated to $7 million that we're suggesting, which is an increase from what we had shown you before, is very much about reforming the existing programs and the development of new program pathways. So on both counts, there are some standardized parts of the student experience that we are working to implement, a set of best practices around, particularly focused on adult learners and in the online setting. And we're getting some assistance with that actually from the Community College Research Center based out of Columbia. They're the architects of things like guided pathways. They also have done an extensive amount of research and implementation around sort of the student experience, student advising and supports pieces. And we have a lead researcher from there who is working with us in addition to the center head, Tom Brock. That lead researcher actually has a ton of experience with iPass, which is integrated student advising and support services that are delivered through technology. And so we are, that is like an acute focus of both current improvements for existing students, but also to prepare us for an increase in the number of students that we want to bring onboard in the fall, but to ensure a level of quality around what their experience is and to really be able to get ahead of identified gaps that we have found in that process. The other thing I'll just point out because as a preview, that, one second, that, that we are also starting to figure out, which I think will be helpful to the system as well. We've identified a lot of gaps that we see in this through line for students that start with the CCC-apply application process. And so that has been, I know, a sore spot for many other CEOs that I've spoken with throughout the system. And we see some potential improvements there that will also help assist us in the process of bringing folks that we reach out to actually through into enrollment. So there's a couple of different areas in that regard that we're, that we're resourced to address and that we're in the process of putting in motion.
Jita, can I just ask a follow-up? What line item in the temporary budget would that fall under?
So in the, so we see some of that work as one-time work because it is really setting up some basic aspects of the student experience. So there's a portion of that that will be, that will be a lot of development and one-time cost. And that's included in that $7 million to improve existing programs and develop new pathways. And as an ongoing part, that would be, that would move over to the ongoing side once we had the clarity around the way that we would need to operationalize that on an ongoing basis.
No, just to close, I mean, any dollars of one-time monies that we can go ahead and spend now, I think are important because if more political pressure comes from the legislature, I believe they'll want to sweep more of that one-time money. And so I think it's really important for us to spend as much of it, as smart as we can, as quickly as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Grande?
Thank you, President Epstein. There was just two items that I wanted to query. One is on the budget assumption for operating expenses. We have travel and professional development at about $405,000. And I was wondering if we know, what's the breakdown for professional development versus travel? And have we earmarked funds specifically for faculty professional development, especially as we begin to launch our own academic senate and we want to encourage them for collective bargaining conferences? How much of the $405,000 is specifically earmarked for the professional development activities of our faculty? And secondly, I noticed $140,000 earmarked for supplies. And it says that we anticipate cost escalations there as we begin to onboard more students into the program pathways. Are we going to continue to provide them with all of their textbooks and licensing application fees that we have done with the beta cohort?
So yeah, so, you know, this budget assumes that we do continue to pay the costs of the textbook licensing, the costs of sitting for the, you know, where there's an exam, that the cost for sitting for the exam. So that's, you know, the budget is, reflects that or assumes that. With regard to your other question, so we haven't specifically broken out how much is set aside for faculty professional development. That's something that we'll continue to work on and look at. But it is, we have significantly increased the amount that we've set aside for travel and professional development. I think we've, you know, roughly doubled it, maybe even more so based than what we have spent this year on travel and professional development. Of course, this year, you know, we did certainly have folks traveling to conferences and doing a lot of that. Also, you know, bear in mind that we are, we have a very distributed workforce. So we do have, you know, perhaps a higher cost for travel because, you know, before COVID-19, we had a higher cost of travel for folks coming to attend in-person meetings from different parts of the state. But, you know, but we will have, you know, as that being said, we will have significant room for professional development for staff and faculty in particular.
And just one follow-up question. Where do we land on the 50% law?
So we are not complying with the 50% law yet. You know, that's something that we continue to, you know, evaluate. And, you know, I think part of our work ahead of us is to look at a path or how we, how we get on a path to compliance with the 50% rule. Of course, you know, you need faculty and instructors particularly to comply with that. And we've just now hired our first faculty. You know, we could probably, there's some of the consultants that we have on that we could probably count towards that as well. Some of the instructional materials expenses, we can count towards that. But certainly the faculty and the instructors particularly are a key component of that. So, you know, we need to plot our path towards reaching or complying with that 50% rule.
One additional thing I just want to remind folks of, which is, you know, when the original enacted legislation envisioned a seven-year period in which the college becomes fully operational. And under becoming fully operational and getting to a level of scale means that we won't be constantly living under a $15 million budget envelope in perpetuity. So, you know, I think there are investments that we need to make now that will lead to our ability to grow revenue for the organization that would allow us to hire more instructional staff. And then I will also point out upfront what has not been always pointed out enough, which is this is a very highly intensive student support and learning model. And I think for the, over the next few years, we want to continue to assess and keep the board and other folks abreast of the counting that we will do for those interventions, which we think are highly correlated with student progression in their academic programs. And so I just, I would encourage us to also consider how difficult it is to operate this model under the 50% rule, something that has been pointed out repeatedly, but something that we want to continue to provide data around so that folks understand that the importance of those support activities, not as ancillary, but as a central part of the learning process.
Thank you both. I appreciate the response.
Before we go on to any other board members, I just have a question. Are we obliged, under our authorizing statute, to be in compliance with the 50% rule already, or was there a timeline for that?
So, you know, my understanding is we have, in our seven-year startup ramp-up window, we have, we are expected at the end of that to be in compliance with all of the rules and regulations that govern the community college system, and that includes the 50% law.
So, but we're not required to comply with it at this moment?
No, because we are in the, in the process of building all of the compliance aspects of the college's work. So, you know, I think through the strategic planning process, we will want to also identify our strategy around getting towards 100% compliance on a number of these things. But I just sort of mentioned the piece around that rule specifically because it disadvantages models that are high-touch student support models. And this is not just something that Calbright will face, but this is something that the system will face, especially if we are perennially in periods of needing to deliver online. So in order to do online well, especially for the equity communities we're talking about, we need to have some better accounting for those aspects of support services that are highly connected with student academic progression.
Thanks. To other board members.
I've got a question, Tom.
Number Rollins.
I take a look at the one-time spending we're doing now and I see the partnerships we have there and a few of the other areas that I would imagine we're going to be wanting to do over time. Do we have a plan for transitioning support of those partnerships from the one-time funding to the ongoing funding? And if not currently, is that something that you're looking at as we examine funding models moving forward once we get past this seven-year period?
Yes, it's not something that we have in hand now. It is absolutely that, something that we will think about in the process of thinking about how we strategically expend the one-time funds. In particular, some of this work will happen over multiple years. And also, I would say that when we approach what we're doing, we are thinking always about the revenue model that sustains it underneath it. So I think these shouldn't, these dollars should not be treated or supplanted as ongoing funds or the need for ongoing funds, but really be the part of the infrastructure development, prototyping part that gets us to more sustainable models that have revenue source underneath them. And that could be state, it could be a portionment, it could also be other sources of funding that, that we might be able to tap either federally or otherwise.
Other board members.
Tom, I had a question. You just mentioned the seven-year timeline. In light of the budget issues that we just confronted, should we be working under the seven-year model still? Or do we need to make it a three-year model or a four-year model?
I think it's a good question. I do, I have, just in the past couple of weeks since we got the final numbers, reflected on the fact and have been internally talking to the team about how this essentially shortens the runway we have to be revenue generating. So I think we do see a lot of what needs to happen to get a scale ready happening within this year and then the next 24 months.
But on that 50% rule, do we need to speed that timeline up as well?
I think that will be very, very difficult to do until we have more students and can hire more faculty.
Other board comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Have we been approached by anybody that really sees the value of our effort? And, you know, given the times that we're in, that are interested in investing in what we're doing? Like Neil Gates or somebody like that?
A high net worth individual. I think we have attracted a lot of attention from a number of different philanthropies who are, who would be interested in supporting. who would be interested in supporting aspects of our work, particularly because our work is is population-centric. And so when we think about engaging with philanthropic partners, we also think about the cost-benefit analysis. Requirements of and conditions around that funding are also time-consuming sometimes, and we just sort of have to take it, take it on balance. So I I think there is a lot of interest. I think there will be opportunities to secure additional philanthropic funding going forward. I think there's a lot we need to do before that, that's baseline to the college's operations, before we're really positioned to execute that stuff really well. But but I absolutely, I have definitely had conversations with philanthropies that are that are very interested in what we're doing, that are tracking how it's going and that that see that see the value of Calbright particularly in solving challenges around the frontline workforce and around kind of the ability for public institutions to to transform themselves into more responsive agents for program needs when when the economic conditions shift. So.
But don't you think the opportunity is now? Because it may not be the beginning of the year. We don't know what the future is. The opportunity is kind of now.
Yes, yes. And I, you know, the door is is open and we we do coordinate with the Foundation for California Community Colleges around around philanthropic asks. So I think I think there's a couple of pieces in place, and I don't think it's far away for us. But I do think we need to be thoughtful about how we engage in in the philanthropic partnerships we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comments? Any comments in the public?
No, I don't have any public.
Okay, then we'll take a motion to approve the tentative 2021 budget.
Summit.
Second.
Okay, I got Costa. Was that Anderson who did second?
Yes.
Okay, all right, please call the roll.
Hildegard Agudalda?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Yes.
Felicia Carrero?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Hi. Hey, I want to point, I'm sorry, I want to interrupt, but I I got a message from a member Fitzgerald that he's on the that he's on the call, he should be called for the role now too, that he had some difficulty getting in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Jolina Grande?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Blossvia Lovos?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, so please call Colm too.
And Colm Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Moving on now to the county treasury pass-through account. We're really excited about this one. This is the one we've been looking forward to all day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's a couple of technical items coming up here. First is a request to approve resolution 2020-04 to establish a pass-through fund in the Solano County Treasury. You know, early, you know, over a year ago, board adopted resolution to to establish our accounts in the Solano County Treasury. In the process of doing payroll, we've discovered that we need account in the county treasury. And this is pre-standard practice to run run payroll through a subsidiary account in in the county treasury. So we need a board resolution every time we we establish a fund or an account. So this this just requests approval of that. I'm happy to take any questions.
Tom, I had a question. This is Felicia.
Sure.
Just a real quick question. Is there a fee that we we are assessed to have the pass-through these types of accounts with with the county? Just curious.
So to the county, yeah, so the county does does charge us a fee. They actually, they're so they, yeah, they charge us a fee and then there there are there are bankers as well as Fargo, so that there's a fee there. So far though, our our interest earnings on on the accounts of are are well in excess of of the fees that that we're that we're paying. Establishing this new account though, wouldn't wouldn't really significantly increase our fees at all.
Any other board comments? Any public comments?
No public comment.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Rawling, second. Please call the roll.
Hildegard Agudalda?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Yes.
Felicia Carrero?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye, excuse me, aye.
Jolina Grande?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Blossvia Lovos?
Aye.
Thank you.
And you you skipped Colm again.
I'm sorry, I'm wasn't sure if Colm was a voting person. Colm Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the item 4.6, the last action item, CalSTRS Cash Balance Benefit Program.
Right, so we request adoption of resolution 2020-05 to not offer, not participate in the the CalSTRS Cash Balance Benefit Program at this time. So over a year ago, when when the board adopted all the required resolutions to participating in CalSTRS, one of the resolutions was requiring that we offer this CalSTRS Cash Balance Benefit Program. You know, we, at this point in time, we don't really have any employees that that would benefit from from the program. In addition, for anyone who wants to participate in the program would have to not 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 pay into social security. And furthermore, you know, the participation in the program, even though we don't really have anyone that would benefit, you know, it it does require additional reporting. Makes payroll a bit more complicated, makes reporting into CalSTRS a bit more complicated. So you know, we're requesting not to do it at this point in time. And then, you know, if we do have employees in the future that could benefit from the program, then then we could reconsider. And just to walk back a little bit of background, so that this cash benefit program is alternative to the standard defined benefit program. So all the all the faculty that you you just approved, plus a number of our other employees will be participating in that that CalSTRS defined benefit program and not in not in this program. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, any any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, let's call the roll.
We have a motion?
We can move.
Oh. Thank you.
There you go, I'll move.
Okay, roll. Hildegard Agudalda?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Yes.
Felicia Carrero?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Colm Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Jolina Grande? This Grande, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Yes.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Blossvia Lovos?
Aye.
Thank you.
Glad we see Colm on the on the video. And I, now that I've seen him, I want to find out who his barber is, so I can have an opportunity to go to him as well.
I wish I could go to a barber right now.
Okay, that's it for action items. We are now to information reports items 5.1, process to select peer institutions for salary schedule development.
Right, thank you. So in order to develop our salary schedules for presentation and adoption by the board, we've retained McKnight and Associates. Their scope of work includes development of faculty, classified and administrator salary schedules, as well as job analysis and specification and and providing tools for us to assist in placement on the of current and and new employees on on the salary schedule. They are starting off focused on developing our our faculty salary schedule. That is the most critical at this point in time. And and the first step in that process is to identify peer institutions for Calbright. So I've got Stan and Phil McKnight with me today to walk through the process for doing so. So I'd like to hand it off now to Stan McKnight.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you, members of the Board of Trustees and also the administration. Very happy to be with you and proud to be working with Calbright. We appreciate your mission and and really want to support it. What we'd like to talk to you about today, if we could have the first slide up, please, next slide. Is a little bit about the goals of the study. The peer group assessment methodology we'll be using, and just to remind you what our next steps are. Next slide, please. The goals of the study is to, first of all, establish a peer group, as Nick indicated. This is absolutely essential to conducting a market study. And the market study is essential to developing the salary schedule. So we'll be establishing a peer group, conducting a market study. The for non-faculty jobs, we will do a a job analysis, which we can discuss at some later time. And of course, the ultimate goal is to create a salary schedule for administrators and managers for faculty, 12-month faculty appointments, and of course, classified staff. Next slide. As Nick indicated, the peer group is absolutely the foundation of the compensation structure. It's very important that we spend the time that we need to spend and the diligent analysis that needs to be done in order to identify objectively the peer groups that we want to compare ourselves to. Makes a big difference. The initial steps in the process and focus of that is what we're going to be discussing today. Want to mention three keys to success in compensation. This is true in any compensation program. But it's basically the three things we need to keep in mind and keep in balance is market equity, internal equity, and accountability. What we're talking about in market equity is making sure that we have benchmarked the institutions properly that we'll be recruiting from, not that we're recruiting from institutions, but the recruiting area for which we will be drawing faculty and staff. It's also important that once we have a structure, that we have an internal equity system that assures that we have equitable pay practices in place and guidelines in place. That's one of the key attributes to a successful program. And then, of course, the final reality is we're accountable. We have to design a pay structure that is available within your financial resources. You were just looking at your tentative operating budget for the next year. And you know that the salaries and benefits becomes a larger and larger part of the operating budget. So we have to be within guidelines. So we can balance all three of these things together. Then we'll end up with a very successful program. I'd like to talk a little bit about peer group methodology, and I'd like to turn that over to my associate and partner, Phil.
Thank you, Stan, and good morning, everybody. I'd like to cover our methodology as to the process of how we are going through the steps of coming to a conclusion of a peer group. The steps include, there's four four steps that make up this methodology process. We'll get into that further detail in the next upcoming slide. Step one is the attribute consensus. The data collection is step two. We'll set parameters for step three, and then finally, the pure recommendation. Now, the first step is the attribute consensus. So what we did is we we provided leadership with the basically a survey or a form to fill out for check check off specific attributes. Following that, we asked leadership to identify primary attributes. In this case, there were four: institution type, geographic location, significant online instruction delivery, and financial resources. And so following that, at the next bullet point, we asked them to assign an objective measurements, meaning weight these values for each primary attribute. And so the display down below shows the breakout of how we weighted this summary. And so the institution type and geographic location were both the heaviest weighted attributes, primary attributes. Following that was significant online delivery, and then last, financial resources. So this concluded about 100% or made up 100%. And those were the beginning stages of how we assessed a peer group. Following step two, we had to collect data. And in order to do that, we looked at community colleges statewide, and we looked at other institutions nationwide that had significant online delivery. The total database for some of the peers to be in consideration, there were 74 nationally and within the state of California. Of that 74, 17 were heavily significant online delivery institutions. The makeup of the 74, there are 57 community colleges that represent 39 districts, California community college districts. Step three, there's really two parts to setting up a parameter computation and peer assessment. So what we did is we established parameters, meaning we framed each attribute into two separate comparisons, meaning a range. So we framed each attribute for one, group one would be the minimum the minimum to the 25th percentile per attribute. That would be an essential group one that we would review, and then group two would be 26 to the 50th percentile, which is the framing of each attribute. Anything beyond that, we would consider aspirational at this stage. But these are the two peer groups that we will be looking at further. The second part of step three, which is more of an example, using the results from the leadership. Again, we weighted the total primary attribute values, and then we took it another step further and tallied all of the number of attributes that fell within those conditions or those parameters, if that makes sense. So down below is an example. And for example, we can use the top institution or California community college slash district. And there was 17 conditions that met that fell within those parameters, and it had an overall weighted score of 185. Step four, finally come to a recommended peer institution group for consideration. And then following our peer group recommendation, we have our upcoming next steps, which Stan mentioned earlier. The market study. The market study, pay practices, compensation, uh, philosophy, and then finally, um, establishing a salary schedule. And I welcome up to, uh, any questions at this point?
Thank you. Um, are there any questions in the board?
Tom, I have a couple of questions.
Underpass.
Um, yeah, I, I think I have kind of, uh, a question and probably a comment, which is, I know that you, um, I totally agree with the presentation that the peer groups and the comparator institutions are essential. That is the whole exercise. And I really want to thank the staff for going through this, because I've asked for this for, for quite some time, and I think it's absolutely essential as we hire people to have a baseline of data so we can kind of figure out, um, how, you know, this should be paid, paid, and how we can make that equitable. You mentioned that in part, the peer group weighting that you've presented to us was done by interviewing leadership, and I'm worried if you can tell us a little bit more about that leadership. Um, and then my comment is just that, you know, I personally wouldn't support any peer group that included non-public entities. Um, you know, this is an area that I've dealt with extensively in my professional life with both UC and CSU. And the way in which we look at resources available, I don't find to be, um, appropriate for a public institution. And higher ed is known to engage in kind of salary arms races, and I simply don't want Calbright to be part of that.
So I can, I can take the, the first part of the question. Um, so the, well, I guess the, the question versus the, the, the comment. So the, the, the survey included, uh, executive, the executive team of, of Calbright, so the CEO, myself, acting chief learning officer, chief success officer, chief, you know, chief technology officer. So that, that, so we, you know, the executive team of Calbright, you know, contributed to, to that, um, to that, uh, survey. You know, I think, um, certainly, certainly we're, we're open to, um, you know, input from, from the Board. And others on, on, you know, what, what the, what, you know, what, what, what attributes and, and weighting, um, you know, should be factored in. Um, you know, and this is, you know, I, you know, I don't think, um, you know, this is the, the only engagement that we will have with, with you all on this. Um, you know, I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll, uh, you know, certainly, you know, when, when it comes time to present that salary schedule, there'll be, uh, opportunity for board involvement there. I think there's probably a few of them. You know, other, ongoing and, and further board, you know, engagement with, with any, any of you that are particularly interested and, and want to, uh, have some input on this. So, um, you know, we, you know, we will, uh, you know, this is just, so the kind of the first step in, in the process.
Um, I just wanted to add, like, I actually, I definitely agree with Amy, and I've definitely observed over time, particularly, you know, private for-profits with significant endowments having, uh, a different calculus in a lot of the financial decisions that they make. Hiring is one of them, amenities are another. Um, I think in here, we really wanted to be able to strike the balance between our sister colleges, but also provide recognition to the fact that we wanted to be competitive in our recruitment pool also, where the talent that we were seeking had significant online experience, and particularly in certain cases of institutions with, who suggested competency-based education experience. It is, um, we are finding, uh, it takes a lot to, uh, to provide the professional development necessary for folks to be able to teach in an online environment, particularly in an online competency-based environment. And we thought it was important for the course of the market study to, uh, to understand, um, what, uh, similar institutions with similar models, uh, their compensation structures for faculty. So, uh, I, I do think that that is also important, and I do absolutely agree and recognize your point around, um, the way in which particularly we've seen this in the four-year market. That can be, uh, different with the inclusion of different cherry picking, different institutions.
Hi, Tom, I had a question as well.
Go ahead, member. Let's go back for you.
Yeah, I, um, just kind of building on the, the questions that Amy was asking around, um, private institutions. I was, I was curious. You mentioned, um, in the presentation that there were approximately 17, um, now, groups that you looked at that were national entities, and I'm wondering how many of those were private versus institutions versus public institutions, if, if you had that information. I know there are some public institutions with significant online service delivery out there, but there probably are more private institutions. I'm not sure. Um, I'm speculating there, so it'd be good to maybe, if you could say a little bit more about those 17 institutions outside of California that you all looked at.
Um, it, it looks like, from what I'm showing on my, my spreadsheet right now, it looks like there's about 90% of them are private, meaning one or two is public that I'm showing. And, and I just want to emphasize that, um, that, uh, when we compare institution type, we're really comparing the same kind of measurements that is makeup, the makeup of Calbright, meaning the Carnegie classification, which is a, a two-year public, so, you know, associates Carnegie classification. So, um, when we assess these, we move forward, we recognize that there are differences, meaning a private four-year institution that can also hold a doctorate Carnegie classification level.
I've got a question also, and a point maybe.
Sure.
So, uh, and I'm, I'm kind of on the same track that, uh, that the other folks have been on. So what I'd want to do is make sure that as we do the market study, that the data we get back is disaggregated. Because I think the, the point that member Costa was making is that when we get to the point where we're, uh, you know, kind of taking a look at compensation philosophy, we don't want the private institutions to skew, um, maybe the, the benchmark that we're looking at. So if we have a, a, a median and we have an average, uh, that then, uh, we're able to go and say, you know, hey, we want to peg our faculty at the 75th percentile of salaries. We don't want the private institutions to skew us too highly, right? Or with administrators or classified. So, uh, I think it's important that we disaggregate that as we go into taking a look at the compensation philosophy, so then we can really identify, for these classifications, um, you know, and for these positions, we may need to take a look at what is available and competitive out in private, where others, we may, uh, place a little less emphasis on it. We want to have a system that we can do that, and we can't do that if the data is aggregated.
Any other board member comments? Okay, are there any public comments?
There's no public comment.
Okay, uh, with that, then, um, that completes our, uh, public agenda, except for the public forum. We have, uh, thank you, the McKnights, uh, and, uh, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, uh, so we have a public forum. Are there any, is anyone wish to comment on the, during the public forum?
There's no public comment requested.
Okay, then we will, uh, uh, end this public session and convene a closed session. We have nothing left on the agenda other than adjournment, so it, we will come back into public session to adjourn, but that's all we're going to do. So, um, those of you who are following, you probably have better things to do than to wait for that. So, um, anyhow, that's, uh, that's it for now.